I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will you please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming this evening. All board members are present. First item is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make the motion.
By Lee, second.
Second.
By Todd. Any questions or discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And that motion carries seven zero. On tonight's consent agenda, we have the check wire transfer and dispersment summary and our bank reconciliation statement. We also have several donations from Jennifer Bona, Laura Cook, Gillian Farley, Diane Haight, Sarah Janis, Brian Kaiser, and Lori Rudell through the Wells Fargo Foundation Educational Matching Fund Program for Glendale Elementary. We also have $750 from the Minnesota Valley Electric Co-op for the expansion of our web program at Hidden Oaks, and $903 from Tamarack Consulting and Do It Right, which was the original Laker store to offset students who can't afford to pay for extracurricular activities at the high school. Do I have a motion? Oh, and resignations and non-renewals as presented. I do have a couple more things. Also, the resolution of certification of the census and our Schools for Equity and Education membership. Do I have a motion to approve the set agenda?
So moved.
By Mike, second.
Second.
By Tom. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And that motion carries seven zero. So we'll start with our first Laker pride. We're still waiting for one to show up. Hopefully she does. But introduce Cole Sullivan.
Pam Winfield is coming forward to present Cole or to share with us what Cole has done for his Eagle Scout project.
Hey Chairman Pratt, Dr. Groover, and members of the Prior Lake Savage Area School Board. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce to you tonight a very fine young man named Cole Sullivan. Cole is a member of Boy Scout Troop 268 in Lakeville, and he has just completed his Eagle project, and Prior Lake Savage was the benefit of that particular project. And what he's bringing to you is the artifact from his project. Those are called field desks, and they're used by our students when they go out in outdoor classrooms. And you can see how handy they are. You can put all of your, the things that you gather underneath and keep your paper materials on top, and they have been very well used at Westwood and at Jeffers Pond and at Glendale where Cole gave those to our school. We are really excited to talk about Cole a little bit tonight. He's been in Boy Scout since he was a Tiger Cub, and that was back in 2002. So he's been there a long time. He received his Arrow of Light Award in 2007, and he has been in leadership positions throughout his career there as a Boy Scout. He's been a patrol leader, he's been the quartermaster, and he's also been the assistant senior patrol leader. He has 22 merit badges completed, and he is now completing the final requirements for his Eagle Scout Award. On Wednesday, he leaves for Philmont. So he's a busy young man. In addition to that, he's an honor student at Lakeville. He also is a sophomore, he will be a sophomore at Lakeville North, and he's been around Westwood for a very long time. He has big muscles from carrying the boxes of clay for his mother, our art teacher. So he comes in every fall and helps her set a room up, and he's just an all-around great kid. And we appreciate his project so very much. It's really made a difference in our environmental ed classrooms. So thank you very much, Cole.
Thank you. Do I get to keep this?
Where did you get the idea for this?
Yeah. Environmental Ed Program and through Prior Lake Schools. Kara Rickenberg, I found out about the project from, and she helped through the whole process of planning my project, and she just was really good help with that.
How many did you make altogether?
I made 90, 30 for each school.
Nineties.
You said, you've said you, these been used a lot?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Cole actually finished the project, I think, in the fall, wasn't it?
Yeah.
And we used them a little bit in the fall. We used them during our winter festival, and we also used them this spring. And they've been great help to keep the kids organized when they're outside.
If they've been used a lot by elementary kids, these are made very well.
Did you design it?
No, it was, the design came with the idea. Kara had the design, and I just followed that. I had to make a few adjustments with the plans, didn't fit quite right.
Well, it's a wonderful donation of your effort and time and abilities, and congratulations on progressing to Eagle Scout.
Thank you.
But thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're gonna, we're gonna hold off the presentation of the Optimist Art Award for now. Hopefully, we get, we get the artist to show up this evening, but we'll certainly come back to you. This is the point in time in our meeting that we hold our open forum and allow residents 15 minutes to address any issues not on the agenda. Is there anybody that would like to address the board this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to personnel. Matt.
All right. Good evening, members of the board, and Dr. Groover. Starting, I'd like to recommend the following candidates for employment and am seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion to approve the candidates as presented?
I'll move.
By Todd, second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries seven zero. Approval for summer school staff?
And this is a new item to come before the board. This is the first year that we've done this because as we've continued the process of pulling back services from the county in offering our summer school programming, I wanted to give you guys a sense of, everyone on the board, a sense of what the staffing looks like in our, in our summer programs. And so because these are seasonal, part-time employees, they're not coming forward for an official approval, like in a data sheet like you would normally see, so we're just bringing them forward as an overview for you. So with that, I present the staffing for Summer School 2010-11 and am seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion to approve the summer school staffing as presented?
So moved.
By Rich, second.
Second.
By Stacy. Any questions or discussion? Yes, Rich.
Matt, these are current, all current employees of the district?
Not all of them, no. The significant majority of these employees are all currently employed by the district. However, a couple, in a couple of cases, they would not be employees of the district. I know that we have a couple of our student teachers that have been with us that are, that appear on this list, and a couple of other individuals from surrounding districts perhaps, and from our own community that are coming in. But just like all of our employees, we make sure that they've had a background check and a thorough process, and, and they've gone through a hiring process.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So I have one. Is that because we offer it to teachers and they decide not to take us up on that? Is there a hierarchy of how that goes?
That's correct. We prefer that these jobs stay within the district, and so they are offered to our teaching staff and also our paraprofessional staff typically before we look outside.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries seven zero. Leaves of absence.
Next, I present the following leaves of absence and am seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion to approve the leave of absences as presented?
So moved.
By Stacy, second. By Tom. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries seven zero. Resolution placing staff on unrequested leave of absence.
And so at the last board meeting, we presented a resolution proposing to place staff on unrequested leave of absence. This is the follow-up resolution to that. So it's presenting the resolution to place staff on unrequested leave of absence, and I'm seeking board approval, and this does require a roll call vote.
Okay. Do I have a motion to resolve the placing of teachers on unrequested leave of absence?
I'll make the motion.
By Mike, second. By Tom. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none. We'll start with Todd.
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Stacy?
Aye.
And Tom?
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
Right, and next up, we have presenting on behalf of the school board's Educational Support Staff Negotiation Committee agreement with the Food Services Group for the 2010-11 school year, and I am seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion to approve the food services agreement? By Tom, second.
Second.
By Lee. Any questions or discussion? Matt, you'll give us a copy of this agreement, all the directors?
Yes, absolutely. Still needs signatures before we can get a final copy out.
Okay. And this is within the parameters set by the board?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries seven zero. And the approval of the job description for the Mars and Targeted Services Secretary.
Yes, so finally, we have the job description before you. It is for the Mars and Targeted Services position. We've always had a job description and position available for the Mars portion of this. What's new is the Targeted Services Secretarial portion of this. And with that, I will present a approval.
Do I have a motion to approve the job description as presented?
So moved.
By Stacy, second. By Todd. Any questions or discussion?
A real quick question. Is this a new position then, Matt?
It is a new position. It was brought forward at our last board session, and again, the fund, just to review very quickly the funding for this position again, it is money that the district has received by taking over targeted services from the county, and we always had a set aside for a part-time secretarial position with that. But in our first year, we didn't know how much money we'd be bringing in, so we wanted to make sure that those funds would be available before we created the position. And now we do have a sustainable model. The funds are available, and that's why this is coming in, to help with clerical support from bringing that additional programming into the district.
Okay.
And so it does not represent any additional funding.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And that motion carries seven zero. Okay, we're gonna jump back on the agenda to Laker Showcase and the Optimist Art Award. Okay.
Hi, I'm Mary Nagarajan, president of the Optimist Club, and every year, the Prior Lake High School Art Department hosts an art show highlighting student artwork completed in their classes. And each year, the Optimist Club selects a piece of art to purchase and donate back to the school district. Much of the artwork that you see in the DSC is actually student artwork that's been donated by the Prior Lake Optimist Club. This year, we selected artwork by Catherine Kates, and it looks like Catherine couldn't be here tonight. Her artwork's on display over there, so... Yeah, I was gonna have Catherine come and talk about her work. There is a blurb about it. It's representing the tsunami in Japan, and it's... Is she here? Oh, yeah. Wonderful. Come on up, Catherine. So Catherine, we're hoping that you could maybe talk a little bit about your inspiration for your artwork, real quick.
Sure.
Can the, can the folks at home see her on the video?
My inspiration for this piece was, it was supposed to be sort of a tribute to Japan and the hurricane that hit it this March, I think. And, because our, we were doing in studio, we were making a light project, and that would have to be our inspiration, just light, like really vaguely. So I, I decided to like do something a little different and do something that's like a little bit, like I wanted to do something about Japan, because I was pretty sure no one else was going to, and I'm like, huh, well, maybe I'll do, you know, like light as in hope. And so I made all of the lanterns on the Kyoto street, by the Kyoto Tower. Like they're, each one of these lanterns represent a steady in Japan, and every single one of the broken lanterns are the ones that got affected and destroyed. And so I made a Japanese bobtail cat, like lifting up one of the lanterns and like lighting it, I guess, kinda, because Japanese bobtail cats are good luck in Japan, in folklore. So I made that lifting up the lamp and fixing it and kind of more of an uplifting message that, you know, just to kinda help out a little bit, maybe, so.
And can you tell us how you did it? What kind of text, what materials did you use?
Well, the only thing I drew on actual paper was the cat, and then I went into the computer and I, with a tablet, I drew the, the whole cityscape sort of thing, and I used Photoshop, like with burn tools and stuff, like to make this like darkish, like papery looking texture. I actually took, I took a picture of paper myself to make the paper texture, and I used different Photoshop elements to make the lights and everything else, so.
Here's your text, Catherine. Congratulations.
And that'll be available for viewing throughout the meeting or after, and if you'd like to see that and any of the other artwork that our students have done in the past years, as Dr. Groover said, we have a lot of that on display here. So it's all, we have some very talented young people. Moving on to old business, approval of the preliminary budget for 2011-12.
Good evening, Chair Pratt, the school board members, and Dr. Groover. Tonight, we will discuss the 2011-12 budget process and our legislative update. As you know, and you've been hearing in the news, the legislators and the governor have not completed the 2011 session. Right now, the state faces a $5 million, $5 billion budget shortfall for FY 2012-13 and a 4.4 billion shortfall in 14 and 15. And so in this two bienniums, that's one of the arguments, is how do we solve this issue? They would all like to continue the state aid shift, payment shift for districts to 70-30. As you remember, two years ago, it was 90-10. Then it reverted to 73-27, and now it's down to 70-30 for this current year, and it's anticipated it would be 70-30 for next year also. That would help to reduce that budget shortfall by 1.4 billion dollars. And so I fully anticipate that that will continue to happen even though we are not finished with this legislative session. Some of the common themes that we've been hearing throughout this whole session and even into these negotiations is protecting the E12 education from budget cuts and needing to increase our basic education funding formula. They are still continuing to examine our compensatory and integration revenue allocation formulas, reviewing our special education formulas and the cost drivers involved with those formulas, and the need to invest in early childhood education. As I stated earlier, they've not completed their session, and so we do have the thought, and it is looming, July 1st is Friday, the impact of a state shutdown and what that would mean for our school districts. Basically, that no money can be paid out of the state treasury without appropriation. And since there isn't an education bill, there is no appropriation for school districts. State agencies list state aid payments to school districts a priority one or two, critical service, but it does not mean it's essential. In the past, we had a state shutdown, and they did list this as an essential service, so we did receive our state aid payments. It is not the same governor or legislative bodies, so it is a different session, and we do not anticipate that they will continue that. We're still waiting to hear what the final judgment will be. It's ultimately up to the court to determine what that critical service is. And they are encouraging districts to have a contingency plan in place, and the district has, in the past, built a positive fund balance to help with the cash flow, and that is a huge part of the district's contingency plan, because we do have this unexpected event that we are anticipating with the state shutdown. So it is important to have that positive fund balance so that we can make it through these short periods of time, which I'm hoping it is a short period of time until they settle this negotiation. And so that will help us. So right now, we're not anticipating a need to borrow any money in July and hopefully in August, if it happens to last that long. But we do weekly review our cash flow analysis to determine if there are any future borrowing needs, and we will be monitoring what is happening up at the legislative level on a daily basis to make sure that we are current with what our needs are in the district. The school board, in the past meeting, established a line of credit to help with cash flow borrowing on a short-term basis, and that's exactly what we will need. It's a little bit different than our aid anticipation certificates in that aid anticipation certificates are borrowed over a much longer period of time. And because we are in the unknown at this point, the line of credit does help to serve us in this period of time with the unknown. And so if we do run into a short-term cash flow borrowing need, we do have that line of credit to help us. So we are prepared for this shutdown in the event that we actually do have a state shutdown. The budget process, we've discussed this. It's been, we are in the second year of a two-year budget process, and so the board approved a six-period date for 2011-12, last August of 2010. The administration met to discuss staffing and to accommodate that six-period day scheduling, and we did have additional reductions in staffing at the elementary level due to declining enrollment. I am happy to say, though, our enrollment is, we're doing very well in our enrollment for this year. As you can see on the second slide here, our enrollment changes. Our kindergarten classes are declining, but they're not as declining as much as we had thought they would be. And so that's a good news moving forward for the district. But we do have a declining enrollment, just slightly, for this year, and we're budgeting for that. Our enrollment trends, this slide I've added in here, you can see the bottom line is our kindergarten numbers. You can see them slowly start to decline. The blue line, the middle line, is our middle school, six through eight, and that goes up slightly, and we see that in our enrollment. We have that bubble coming through, those elementary, higher grade levels are coming through the middle school right now, and then it starts to decline just slightly. The two top lines are the interesting lines. The bottom one is our grades nine through 12. You can see that going up, but also you can see our grades one through five are declining, and that is where we made the reductions in staffing because of that declining enrollment in our grades one through five. With the economy stalled, that had a big impact on our declining enrollment, and without parents moving in, the district was in a very much an expansion mode for several years because we had a big boom in our enrollment, in our census, because we had people moving into the district. And unfortunately, with the declining economy, we also saw a decline in our enrollment. Our revenue budget assumptions, we have a stable enrollment for this year. We're also anticipating no increase or decrease to our basic formula, and no increases to our fee structures. Our cash flow, we are anticipating, as I mentioned earlier, the 70-30 shift. We do not anticipate any increases in interest revenue, just simply due to interest rates that are out there at this time. We are anticipating that we will continue to receive the AdSIS grant dollars that were used for RTI at our elementary schools, and we will utilize our remaining federal job bill dollars. For our revenue sources, we received $5,124 per pupil unit in state aid. The district voters also approved an additional $1,051 per pupil units that we utilize across the districts. We received federal sources of special education and title programs, and we also have other local revenues, fees, and admission, those types of things, into the general fund and other state aids and levies. You can see how our, 77% of our revenue in the general fund is from state aids, and that's why this shutdown is so important for us to monitor this, because the majority of our revenue does come from state aids. The other big portion, 19%, does come from our local property taxpayers. Our expenditure budget, our staffing allocations and our expenditure budget are based on our six-period day at the secondary levels and based on enrollment at the elementary levels. I already mentioned that we made some reductions at that level. We also took into considerations that we had 19 retirees this last year, so that does have an effect on our budget going forward. We do have added into our expenditure budget any contractual obligations that the district has. We did increase our utility costs by 3%. It's nice to see that our gasoline prices are slowly going declining, so hopefully that will help out our budget next year. But we have allocated some additional costs in transportation for that fuel expense. We do have expenses due to that AdSIS grant that we receive from the state. We also have categorical expenditures based on our revenue received, such as gifted and talented and those kinds of categories. Special education, we're anticipating not funded at 88%, and our excess is funded at 66%. If we look at our expenditures by object code, which doesn't mean a lot to you by object, but what this is showing is salaries and benefits is really the biggest piece of our budget, which makes a lot of sense, because we really are an educational service organization, and it's people that are what make up the majority of our expenditures. And so that is our biggest expense, 83% is salaries and benefits. You can see the remainder is there for purchase services and our instructional supplies and other capital expenditures. We like to look at those costs per ADM by program, and so when we look over the past four or five years, you can see how it's changed in each of the categories by administration, district support services. You can see in our regular instruction that that has gone down for this year, and that is, again, due to those reductions we made in staffing. All our other areas are steady, vocational instruction, special education went down slightly simply because of retirements, and those other areas are steady also. simply because of retirements, and those other areas are steady also. This is a spreadsheet that the board sees every year of anticipated fund balances to June thirtieth of two thousand and twelve. You can see that we do have the new fund descriptions out there of unassigned, committed, and assigned that the board will vote on later today for the policy changes. Those are reflected in this new budget. Our estimated revenues and expenditures are steady. We do see fewer revenues mainly due to the reduction in our federal one-time aids that we receive from the federal government, the federal jobs bill that we only receive just a tiny little bit this year. We no longer are receiving any federal special ed monies coming into the district. The district decided a couple of years ago that they would spread some of those revenues out over four years, and so we are seeing a decline in some of those committed areas for federal special ed stimulus. We're slowly spending down those dollars and the opening of Redtail Ridge. The cash flow piece is what we've talked about before, that we added last year into our committed funds specifically for the purpose of cash flow, which will help us in this state shutdown and also with the seventy-thirty shift. We do have restricted areas, and you can see those areas, there isn't anything new in those areas. Those restricted areas include our area learning center and targeted services, staff development, learning and development, gifted and talented, basic skills, safe schools, deferred maintenance, health and safety, and operating capital. Those restricted areas can only be used for those purposes, and that's just a reminder to our board and community members that when we receive revenue for those funds, they can only be used for that purpose. I'll talk about the other funds as I go through the remainder of the slides. Our special revenue funds include both our food service and community services funds, and you can see that seventy-eight percent of those come from other local revenue, which is quite a bit different, because both of those bring in revenue based on serving programs and community ed and also our lunch revenue for student and adult lunches. And our expenditures, again, the majority of our expenditures are in staffing because we're offering those programs and services to our students and community. Our debt service fund, bonds voted on by our district taxpayers, rebuilding, construction, deferred maintenance, and technology are included in this fund. We currently have seven bonds, and we must levy one point oh five percent of the principal and interest payments for the year, and we do that every year, and it's required by law that we do that. We review on an annual basis and more often if we need to, the possibility of refunding for lower interest rates on any of these bonds. And currently, we are looking at two of those for later in the year for possible refunding options. Included in here is the schedule of our long-term debt. You can see our seven bonds, and we are anticipating that those bonds will spread out until the year of two thousand twenty-six, when we're completed paying off all of the current bonds that we have. Internal service fund, they're currently utilized for two liabilities that the district has, our other post-employment benefit options, which liability, the board started that fund three years ago, and so we use that for maintaining the liability that we have for the district, and we're trying to build that fund to sustain it for the future. We also, this year, added our self-insured health insurance. This was voted on by the board in June, that the district would move to a self-insured model, and so those revenues and expenditures will be listed in this internal service fund. For two thousand eleven and twelve, we did have a budget recommendation by the finance committee that the revenue from the, remaining revenue from the federal jobs bill be utilized to lower class sizes in two thousand eleven and twelve. As a reminder, this is one-time funding, so we'll only be able to use this for the remainder of this year, for eleven, for twelve and thirteen, eleven and twelve. Any questions on the budget? Yes?
I don't know so much a question, but I know when you were, the last bullet point, you had Julie on the debt service fund and the possibility of refunding to lower the outstanding debt. I know we haven't perhaps taken a formal board action, but I think we've kind of discussed, and it probably was a previous board last fall, so it probably would be a good conversation for this board to talk about, that rather than, you know, taxpayer relief on that, that because of that eleven million dollar OPEB liability that we had, that, you know, in lieu of going out on a secondary or a separate levy to fund that, that the board has said, where we have those opportunities, that we would take those funds and put them in to grow that OPEB fund. And again, that was a conversation that the board last fall had, and I think that it's something that we should contemplate again as we go forward if we do go down that path.
Right now, we're able to levy for about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for our OPEB liability. This last year, the board opted to only levy for five hundred thousand dollars. And so in the future, if we are able to lower that bonding by refunding some of our bonding expense, there's a possibility that we could increase from five hundred to some other number. And it would mean an even amount to our taxpayers, so no increase, but also no decrease.
And that was the intent, I think, of what we had talked about, was to make sure that we kind of didn't increase what our taxpayers were having to pay in total. And I think that's, you know, consistent with at least the four of us that were on before, so the three new folks, just to kind of bring you up to speed on that.
Julie, on the refunding of the bonds, is it a certain schedule? That you can only do it at a certain time on these?
It's a schedule, when the bond's callable, so there, in each of the bonds, there's certain callable dates. You can do some future refunding if the interest rate is correct and you're within a certain time period of the refunding of that bond. And so there's a possibility we could do some future refunding and save some interest expense.
And it's been a couple hundred thousand dollars at times, I mean, so it's not a small amount.
Correct. It does save significant dollars over the term of those, of the bonds.
Any other questions? Just a couple of quick comments or thoughts that I'd like to clarify. This preliminary budget, we still have to get our books audited before we finalize it.
Correct.
So it is subject to change between now and the point in time that the board finalizes it, correct?
That is correct. When the audited figures come in, we will adjust the budget to reflect the audited numbers. And also, we always look at our moment as it increases through the summer months, as it typically does. And so if there's additional staffing that we may need, those types of things also can be adjusted upon board approval.
And we typically have an education bill that's already approved where this time we don't.
Right. Any adjustments to the education bill would be brought back to the board also as part of the final budget.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Do I have a motion to accept the preliminary budget as presented?
So moved.
By Rich, second.
Second.
By Mike. Any questions or just, any other questions or discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. That motion carries seven zero. Approval of the adjusted twenty eleven, twenty-ten, twenty-eleven budget.
We do need to adjust our current year budget, the two thousand ten-eleven budget. We did earlier this year offer an early retirement incentive, and we were able to have nineteen staff retire due to that incentive. And due to that, we have a higher-than-normal severance expenditure. We do budget yearly for our severance expenditure based on the number of retirees historically that we have each year. But because we have a higher number of retirees due to that incentive, we do need to account for that additional three hundred thousand dollars in expenditure. And so I brought that forward to the finance committee, and the consensus was that we utilized the general fund balance in two thousand and ten-eleven to pay for that additional severance expense. And also, in this budget, because of the cost of the early retirement incentive, that needs to be adjusted in this budget also. So there are two lines. So we will add three hundred thousand dollars to this, which we did. We added three hundred thousand dollars to our expenditure budget to account for that, and we also added additional expenditures to this one-time federal jobs bill to account for the early retirement incentive dollars. So those two areas were adjusted on this budget to account for those expenditures.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't think of this when I saw this earlier tonight. Is it really for us to approve a revised budget or simply just to acknowledge that we have a variance to budget?
It would be my recommendation that we approve a revised budget. So when it comes to the auditors, that they are recognizing that the board has looked at this and has authorized those expenditures.
Okay. Mike, let's take some thoughts.
No, I mean, that makes sense.
Any other questions?
Nick, because this is, this is as a result of the board action that we took this spring to offer that incentive program, and we knew going in that we had to offer to everybody that was eligible, and, you know, there was the possibility that more than what we targeted would accept it, which is what happened, right?
Correct.
So it's a, you know...
I thought as we have variance to budget all the time, this is one that the board happened to approve.
Yeah.
So I guess I don't have a big deal with it, I just wondered.
It's really recognizing that the board has approved it, and so therefore the auditors recognize that fact.
And to your point, I mean, we're going to see the costs this year with the savings incoming in future years.
Right, the savings we'll see in eleven, twelve, and future years beyond that.
Just like the state shifting on us.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the revised budget.
Motion by Mike, second.
Second.
By Stacy. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. That motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to new business, co-curricular staffing and survey results. Mr. Rodine.
Good evening. All right, it's that time of year again. For the spring activities review, I'm going to go through the different activities that we had and kind of give you an overall on how they did. Adaptive softball, absolutely outstanding season, seventeen and one. They were state runners-up. They lost in the championship game to an Anoka team that was incredible. But great experience for those kids. It was about half Prior Lake kids, half split between Chaska and Chan Hassen, and then there was one Shakopee kid on the team. So absolutely phenomenal season for them. Baseball, we hired a new coach last year in Ryan Schwartman, replacing Coach Darwin Busselman. Ryan had a good year. They had a great run at it in sections, beat Eden Prairie in the semifinals, and then lost a heartbreaker to Chan Hassen in the winner's bracket, and then had to turn around and play Eden Prairie again and lost in that one. Boys lacrosse, eight and seven, second year in a row. Won their opening round section game again, and then lost to Egan. Girls lacrosse, struggled a little bit again, better overall team feel to it, but ended up three and eleven. Tennis, hired a new coach there, Prior Lake resident, who's a professional up in Minnetaka. Six and ten, which doubled the wins from last year. Got a lot of youth on the team. There was actually two seventh graders playing on the varsity this year. One has the four singles and one has the number one doubles. So there's a lot of depth coming up there. Softball, a new coach there as well, replacing Mona and Beth, who had been to the state tournament a few times. Third place in sections, lost a tough game to Mankato West, who then turned around and beat Shakopee and almost made it, lost to Shakopee in the second game. Trina Larson was an all-state player. She's also been one of twelve players from Minnesota to be asked to play in the Minnesota-Wisconsin game, which I believe is played at Stevens Point. So that's a pretty big honor for her. Girls track, one of our dominant sports, continued to dominate this season. Conference relay champions, which we hosted here at Prior Lake, the South Suburban Conference Relay Championship. Section true team champion, and then section true team third place and section champion. Had ten girls qualify for the state meet this year and did absolutely fabulous. Synchronized swimming, continued to improve. They were fifth overall in state out of twenty-two teams. They were section runners-up, which is absolutely incredible, and also the metro conference runner-up. On a side note with synchronized swimming, they will be swimming with the lake conference this year. Julie, you got an email there. So they'll be swimming against some different competition next year, which will be good. Boys track, continued to show impressive improvement. Two years ago, we were last place in the Misota Conference. Last year, they won the Misota Conference. This year, in the new conference, they were the relay runner-up, third in section. Had two section champions this year. Mike Von Arx, who was our Tuesday Now Award winner, won the vault again. And then Nick Brandt was section champion for the discus. Eight state participants, which is the best ever for boys. So great year. Trap shooting, which you might have seen on our website, trap shooting, which was approved two years ago now. Their varsity and junior varsities both took third place. And this, like Chris Hesch talked about a couple of years ago, this sport is growing like crazy. I get phone calls at least monthly on it by teams wanting to know more about it, and I continue to refer them to Chris, and there's more and more teams that are going. I believe at some point they will ask for high school league approval, and it may happen, it may not, I'm not sure, but it's getting that big. Girls golf, third in section, first time making it to the second day. What they do is, the teams in section, they cut it down from eight teams to four teams on the second day. This is the first time ever that Prior Lake has made it to that second day. Unfortunately, we didn't have anyone qualify for state this year, but overall as a team showed a lot more depth. Boys golf, unfortunately, they were state participants last year. This year, in a very tough section, they were third, and Matt Spear was our only state qualifier. Peach had an outstanding season as section runner-up in a very tough one double-A section. And then we had seven students who went to the state meet, which once again is the most ever. And then last, robotics, eighteenth out of eighty-eight at nationals. And the Minnesota State High School League Board of Directors voted to include robotics next year as a Minnesota State High School League activity. It's going to be kind of unique in the fact that they're going to share it with the first organization that runs it right now. So a lot of the bylaws will not necessarily apply to the robotics like they do to everything else that they have, but they voted it in, and now I think they're going to have to, they're going to figure out how to do it. But it is going to be a league-sponsored event, so that's great for the robotics program. Once again, completed surveys for the spring. Of the parent surveys, one hundred and sixty-three responses, last year ninety-seven. I talk to you always about wanting to get more participation. I was very happy this year that there were more participants, not only in the parent survey, but more importantly, in the student survey, which I will get to. Number one right there concerns me quite a bit. Number one, right there, concerns me quite a bit. Fifty-eight percent said they were impressed or satisfied with the overall communication from my office, from the coaches, et cetera, and that's down fourteen percent from last year. That may have to do with the spring that we had. There was a two-week stretch at one point where we were canceling at least one event. And how we do that is through the computer and let the kids know by announcements, and then, you know, notify me that goes out on the computer. Hopefully, the parents can get that, or their kids calling them and letting them know. But that one concerned me, and that one, you know, raised a little red flag. The knowledge of the coaches, down seven percent. I don't know if that's for the fact that we have many new coaches, and people are testing that a little bit, but those two in general, you know, it concerns me when surveys like that go down. I'd like to see that. Those definitely go up. Opportunity for success, stayed about the same. Working toward excellence, that's kind of an overall. Our program's working toward that, now was up a couple of percent, which is good. Strong offseason program, thirty-two percent said no opinion. Last year, forty-seven percent disagreed. Our offseason programs are stronger than ever right now. If you walk through our weight room, that thing is jam-packed from seven in the morning till about two in the afternoon. My seventh-grade son is doing the middle-school strength team, and there's, I believe, over sixty middle-schoolers up there working with our coaches right now. So, that's good to see with that. Coach has a quality role model, up five percent from last year. You know, that's what we strive for, is to be quality role models to our kids. Standards set high at Prior Lake, seventy-five percent strongly agree, which is up eleven percent. Enjoyable, that one concerns me as well. You know, in reality, we play sports or we do activities to have fun, and when that goes down, that's a little concerning. Fundamentals and strategy, down, and coaches acting in a professional manner, down. We always want to work on our leadership skills. I have my meetings not only with the coaches, but with our captains on that, so we need to always improve that. With the students, had seventy-six responses, which is up sixty-one from last year, which once again, it makes me very happy. I think that helped with, Martha got the survey back to me a little earlier. I think I got it to her a little earlier, and then Christie helped with getting it out via listserv to everyone, so that was good. Respect, I felt like I was respected, so that's from a student's perspective, up twenty percent. Communication, once again, this is going to be one of my emphasis in the offseason and then in the fall, down seven percent. Opportunities for success, stayed the same. Play for the same staff, sixty-six percent want to continue playing for the same staff, and the students found it much more enjoyable. So, those are good signs to me on that point. A little bit on what's coming down from the State High School League. Coach's education, what the high school league has put together is a coach's education course, and this has a lot to do with leadership and being a quality role model, and what are we trying to get out of our kids? Yes, you know, a lot of times, the measurement is wins and losses, but, you know, when those kids walk away and when, you know, they walk away from the programs, what did they really get out of it? What are we trying to teach them? So, there's four online classes that all head coaches from the fall must have done by August twenty-ninth. And the first one is a unit on education-based athletics, which talks about character, responsibility, respect, trustworthiness, those types of things. The second unit, which I'll get into a little bit more, is concussion management. The state legislature passed a bill, which is one-twenty-one-eighty-point-three-two-three, and I'm sure Stacy's well aware of this one too, where all youth coaches are going to have to go through some concussion management training now. The training that the high school league has is put out by the National Federation, and it's an online class. I took it, again, I'm kind of going through it just to get a preview of it. It's not enough, but it's a great start. Concussions are on the headlines all the time now, and, you know, I'll talk a little bit more about what we're planning on doing, but we're going to be ahead of the game on that, and I think it's very important to be ahead of the game with concussions. Last year, we had a ninth-grade football player that had a very serious concussion and suffered throughout the year, and then soccer, had a club soccer player who sustained a concussion and, I believe, was out of school for the majority of the year. So, concussions are a very serious thing, and the more that we're educated about it, you know, the better off we're going to be, and those little strapped helmets that Eric, you and I wore in high school, they wouldn't stand up very well nowadays. Emergency response protocol, this is, you know, in case we have an emergency at a practice, setting up a student response team. So, soccer's practicing, girl soccer's practicing up on those south fields. Somebody goes down, whether a coach or a player, you know, how are we going to react? Where's the closest AED, that type of thing? And then the final unit is a bylaw unit to make the coaches more familiar with the Minnesota State High School League bylaws. They must complete all four of these before the rules interpretation meetings come open, and then they can take that and be eligible to coach in the fall. If they do not do that, Dr. Grover and myself will be getting letters and phone calls from the State High School League saying you're not in compliance. So, our coaches will be in full compliance on that. This is just for head coaches. With the new legislature that has just come down, all of our coaches will be taking the concussion management unit, and fall coaches will all have that done by August twenty-ninth. Give you an update on the Challenge Cup. We've talked about this. This is kind of where we've set our goals. The league broke it down to three classifications this year. In the past, it's just been double-A and A. We are thirty-fifth out of ninety-six schools looking at over that in general. We flatlined, basically is what happened. We are ninth out of tenth in the South Suburban schools. Every school is above us, starting with Apple Valley, who I believe is third, Lakeville North, who is fifth, and then Burnsville was two slots ahead of us, and then there was one school below us. So, that's something that we are going to look to improve on, and I've gone through the points with that. You get ten points for a section champion, and then it goes to a hundred points for a state champion and breaks down from there, and then individuals get points as well. So, that'll be coming out when we do our fall report on our scorecard. So, I'll hit that more. I'll wait on that one. Is there any questions on the report that you won't be voting on?
Actually, I have, does anybody else have anything?
Just one quick question. I saw the, do we letter robotics today?
Yes.
So, they're already, we already recognize them as a varsity sport?
Yes.
And then I saw last night on the news that along with the concussion, the legislature outlawed synthetic marijuana as well. Do we already cover that as far as our abuse policy?
Yes, that is considered part of the, and the league actually came out with that last year and said that any type of mind-altering thing, whether it's legal or not, would be considered that. So, yes.
Now you open up one. I didn't have something before, but, I mean, about a year ago this time, we approved the more stringent substance abuse policy that you had come forward with, Eric, and we supported. Did you see that that changed behavior this last year to the positive, hopefully?
I felt like it did, and I apologize, Mike. I don't have the numbers on you. I'll get the numbers for you for my fall report. I felt like it changed it, whether our, you know, I don't know whether it changed the behaviors, but not as many came across my desk from police officers, per se.
Just stepped in the right direction.
Yeah, absolutely. And I will give credit to the coaches as well. A lot more education on it from the coaches.
Great.
Any other questions or comments? Yes?
I really appreciate you bringing forward the surveys for us to see, both good and the bad. I think that the areas of improvement are important, but also those successes and seeing the students feeling successful or feeling like this was something they wanted to do again, I think certainly leads us in the right direction, so. I applaud you for bringing that forward for us to be a part of, but I know we changed, the Challenge Cup is one of your areas, goal areas, is to have Prior Lake Savage Area Schools move up in that. But in our first year, in our new conference, as well as the high school league changing the levels and making two different ones, I think if we did flatline, then we have a place to begin now as we go forward for next year, and hopefully, there won't be more changes, whether in changing leagues or from the association.
Yeah, let's not do that. That'd be bad, so. And one thing with those surveys too, many people ask, well, what do you do with them other than, you know, show you? And actually, what Martha does is she breaks it down by sport, and when I have my exit interviews, I go through them with the coaches. And some of them are hard to, you know, it's hard for me to bring them to the coaches because many things are, you know, people know that they're anonymous, and they sometimes lash out, kind of like, you know, when they know that they're not going to be seen. But you have to use it as a tool, and, you know, if you use it as a tool and find the construction in it, that's only going to make us better.
I thought it was interesting on the surveys that most of the parental responses show decreasing, or the students tend to be increasing, so.
In the surveys, is there area for comments?
Yes, there is.
And all those comments are shared with the coaches?
Oh, yes, they are. And some, yep, you know, there's some that I wrestle with even showing them, but, you know, yeah.
I just have one more question. It may be tied to the Challenge Cup update that you gave, sir, but can you just, for our purpose, explain a little bit? Because I know this first year of us being in the conference, we were still really in our same old sections, right?
Yeah, and we're...
But that's going to be changing, or is there some realignment that's happening?
There's a little bit of realignment. Football, they have added a class, so there's going to be seven classes of football. We're the eleventh biggest school in the state, so we would have been in the top no matter what, and that, the two Lakeville schools will come over for that section, and Apple Valley, and the two Bloomington schools will be out, so that doesn't change a lot. The biggest change will be baseball. For some reason, softball stayed over in section two, but baseball will move to section three, so it'll basically be all conference opponents for baseball. The rest of them stay the same.
Okay.
So, and that'll be for the next two years.
Okay.
Any other questions?
All right, for ticket prices, ticket prices will, I'm asking that you approve that they remain the same for next year. Seven dollars for adults, five dollars for students. This is the same with all schools in the South Suburban Conference, so home and away parents and fans and spectators will see the same ticket prices throughout the ten schools at the Masota, I can't believe I just did that, at the South Suburban. Once again, we will offer punch cards and LABC membership discounts with the membership buttons and that, so I will be asking for approval of that. Oh, no, there we go. Activity fee proposals, some of the sports and activities on here will stay exactly the same. Some, I'm asking that we raise ten dollars, and that is for concussion management on that. We are going to offer the opportunity to do some baseline testing of students if the parents want to with that, and this would be to offset some of that. So, football, soccer, boys and girls basketball, boys and girls hockey, boys and girls lacrosse, wrestling, will be raised ten dollars for the concussion management.
Yes?
Eric, do these fees, are they comparable with the South Suburban Conference?
These are, these are much lower than District 196, who in fact has raised their fees. I believe they're going to be up about a hundred and ten dollars for each sport. These are much lower than Lakeville, who have skyrocketed past everybody with their fees. I believe their middle-school fees are two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, and their hockey fee is up to seven-hundred-and-fifty. Football is around the six-hundred-dollar range. So, we are going to, we're right in the middle of the South Suburban Conference.
And were you looking for approval of these this evening?
Yeah, ticket sales or ticket prices and activity fees.
One other question.
That was on there, wasn't it?
With the activity fee, do we still do the family discount thing?
Yes, and I am going to, actually, I was going to come back and do that because I didn't put it on here. I was actually going to ask to raise that to eight hundred dollars. We were at six-hundred-and-fifty dollars this past year. I was going to ask to raise it to eight hundred dollars.
Okay. So, six-fifty max per family?
Right, I was going to ask to raise it to eight hundred max per family.
And that's part of the proposal this evening.
I can definitely put it on there? Absolutely.
No, that's, okay. Any other questions?
I guess I just noticed on the agenda, no board action was required tonight for this.
Oh, so, okay. I guess I'll have to come back for that one.
What's your timeline as far as getting this out to parents, though?
I was going to hopefully have it on. I'm going to work on it in the next week and have it out by children, so.
Why don't we bring back the fees for the meeting on the eleventh? Or does the board open the taking an option?
Yeah, I can, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Health and safety application. Jim?
Good evening, Chairman Pratt, Dr. Grover, excuse me, School Board. Before you is a application for our district to participate in health and safety bonding, attachment number, or attachment ten. I'm looking for approval.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the health and safety bonding as presented? So moved by Tom, second.
Second.
By Todd. Any questions or discussion? Yes, Tom?
This is what we approve every year.
Every year, that's correct. This allows us to use health and safety funding for different projects that we use it for.
And all these projects have been approved by the state under health and safety already?
Not yet. This is the first step of that process.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries seven zero. Now, we have schools for equity and efficiency, or energy efficiency.
Thank you. Actually, these are numbers of our utility usage, not just C. There's other initiatives the district is involved with, and I just wanted to highlight the first quarter cost avoidance for this quarter was forty-seven thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-eight Last year, first quarter was twenty-five thousand, so we're headed in the right direction for a quarter. That's, I think, pretty good money.
Any questions? At what point do we expect these to kind of, is this kind of the level you expect to find at a stable level? Do you think we've got more opportunity?
We've got more opportunity, and we're looking, we're pretty aggressive in trying to find every utility dollar we can.
Okay.
But we'll squeeze the lemon.
Yes, Richard?
How did you take these numbers and give them to Julie? Because earlier tonight, she estimated a utility cost of three percent increases per year.
That's a budget number, just to... That's a budget number, just to account for, I guess, the unknown, I'm guessing. These, this is our cost avoidance in consumption from last year's first quarter, or 2011 first quarter, January, February, March.
And did you look at your water usage, you're trying to understand why that increased?
Yeah, we're struggling with water. It's, I'm not quite sure why it's going up. The, that's disturbing. The good news is water accounts very little for our actual cost avoidance, but we are trying to figure out where the water's going. Could be pools.
I did.
Well, I think a big part of the utility change, Rich, is that the base rates themselves are going up. And we saw that last year, there was actually a little bit more detail last year that we saw that had what our usage was in terms of units, and then what the cost was. And so our, our units were going down, but the cost was changing because, you know, you're seeing increases in both the electric, you know, kilowatt hour and also the natural gas, so.
There's a whole report I could share with the board.
Yeah, I mean, but I think that's, that's part of it, is just the base per unit cost is going up more than what we're saving in unit in some cases, right?
Correct, right. What we can control, or my department tries to control, is consumption.
Right.
Costs I have no control over.
I did remember.
Yes.
You have said that we've had cost avoidance of $45,000 in the first quarter of this year. How much have we cost, how much cost avoidance have we earned or achieved as a result of the C program?
That, to an extent, is very difficult to extrapolate. We could probably try to put some numbers to that. It's significant, because we, well, with the users out in the schools are where we get our best conservation.
So we know that some of it is due to the conservation that we have by putting in more efficient lighting fixtures and boilers and all those kinds of things, but we also know there's a program that Cherry does that works with kids to help make sure that when we're in our schools, that we're really operating them efficiently.
Correct, with the school, with the students, staff, and building operators.
So what's the number that Cherry has come up with as far as her savings when she does that? Isn't it around, a little under $200,000?
That was last year, that was total, in total, last year was $200,000. Again, it's, it would be very difficult to break out C, but it's, I think it's significant.
Okay, are there any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is the property and liability and workers' comp insurance renewal. Julie?
Good evening again. In your packet, you will find a renewal analysis that we have for our property and workers' compensation insurance. It is increasing, our property insurance is increasing simply because of inflation. Overall, it's up about 5.52%, and that does include our workers' compensation total. That's, workers' compensation is a big piece of our increase, and that is really based on three years of our claims experience, or what they call our mod rate. And those three years, the last two have been very good. We've done some remediation and working on helping our employees with different, you know, such as falls, and training them how to lift, so that we have fewer workers' compensation claims. However, three years ago, we did have one really large claim, which throws our average off a little bit, so that's the main reason for this increase in our workers' compensation total. But overall, it's a 5.52% increase. Last year was a little over 9% increase, so these amounts do go up. As you know, most of our property insurance is based on what not only happens in our district, but happens around the country and within our state. And so when we see a lot of property claims, generally, all liability insurances go up. And so that has something to do with, also, with our property insurance going up.
Okay. Excuse me, do I have a motion to approve the property liability and workers' comp insurance renewal? By Lee, second.
Second.
By Stacy. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries 7-0. Okay. Prior Lake Police Liaison Agreement for 2011 as well.
In your packet, you'll also see an analysis for our estimated costs for next year for our school liaison officer through the city of Prior Lake. We pay for nine months of this person's salary and benefits, and so you can see that amount there of $42,000. That's an increase of about $1,200 for next year. These funds are paid for, or this expenditure is paid through our crime levy that we utilize every year for this purpose, and this is approved on an annual basis. The remainder amount of this person's contract is paid for by the city of Prior Lake.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the contract for the police liaison officer? Moved by Tom, second.
Second.
By Todd. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. That motion carries 7-0, and this is a very, very important position, and I'm glad we're able to keep it. Next on the agenda is secondary math recommendation. Jeff?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the School Board, Dr. Groover. I'm here tonight bringing forward a recommendation on behalf of the Secondary Math Department. It is a recommendation regarding the Honors Geometry course that is offered to eighth grade students. Presently, that is considered a high school level course. It is, it has been provided to students for quite a period of time, but as I'm gonna be sharing with you in the presentation, I'll give you a little bit of history regarding the credit for learning. Presently, several years ago, students who take the course in eighth grade take it for high school credit, which starts their high school community GPA. So I wanted to foreshadow that a little bit, but I'm gonna be bringing forward a recommendation to change that. Obviously, continue to maintain and provide that course to eighth grade students, but the recommendation before you is to remove the credit for learning option for high school. And I'll be sharing with you a little bit of the analysis we've looked at. Share with you a little bit too, for those of you who are on the board, approximately about a year and a half ago in February, Beth Fuller, high school counselor, and I came to you and presented the World Language component, Spanish I, Spanish II, for eighth grade students, with the similar recommendation to continue to offer those courses, but not for, not for credit. I do need the presentation to come up, however. Thank you. And finally, I will be referencing Policy 620 in this, in this presentation this evening. And later in the evening, later in the board agenda, Policy 620 is being looked at for first read. So you'll see that correlation there, and we'll be talking about that later on in the meeting also. Just to do a brief history on the credit for learning, the district did convening, did convene a committee back in 2007 to look at credit requirements, looking at advanced coursework or high school coursework taken prior to ninth grade. At the time, it was recommended and approved that the World Language courses, 1 and 2, which was Spanish at the time, and Advanced Math course, which is Honors Geometry, offered to eighth grade students, BISO for credit. This is, just to point out here too, at this time, Honors Geometry had been offered to students for quite a period of time. The Spanish I, Spanish II was part of the International Baccalaureate Program. And so that's why this, both of these seemed to come together in this credit for learning discussion back in 2007. And by doing that, students receive high school credit, and the course grade is placed on their transcript. And probably the most significant part of this whole, of what the recommendation approved was, by taking these courses, it begins the student's cumulative GPA towards graduation. And I'll be talking with you about how that played into this recommendation moving forward. The fall of 2009, I was approached by the middle school and high school counselors regarding the impact of that recommendation for credit for learning. There had been conversations within the World Language Department and also in the math department to look at, really, what's been the impact of this approval, of this recommendation? It was brand new in 2007, 2008. What were we seeing as far as students going through the programs? And so the high school counselors, and really Beth Fuller, at the high school started looking at what was the practice of neighboring districts, as well as taking a look at individual students who'd taken these classes, World Language as well as, as well as math. And at the time, feedback from several high schools regarding World Language, we found very few that listed the grade as what, or really awarded credit to students for taking that course. We did find a few, however, the exception was for Honors Math. There were a few districts that were offering Honors Math or Honors Geometry to eighth grade, and they were providing eighth graders with credit in the grade. And so last February, when we, when we came forward, we came forward with the World, World Language recommendation, but essentially had, since the second, since math was going through a curriculum review, we were gonna have them look at that, at that part of eighth grade Honors Geometry, more specifically in their process. And so at that time, for the recommendation in 2009, 10, World Language credit for eighth grade classes was rescinded during the last school year by board approval, and that was February 2010. Spanish I and II are still offered at both middle schools. They are considered a high school level class with increased rigor. There is accountability for students to enroll and complete that course, and it also provides students the opportunity and avenue to pursue higher level World Language courses. We kinda left the math part alone, and so presently, this last bullet point is students who take advanced math in eighth grade under the current policy, 620, they earn high school grade and credit on their transcript, and that does start their cumulative GPA. As a result of that, what that means is students who complete that course, they must take the next course in the sequence if they pass the current level course. And if they choose to repeat the current level of course, then the student must do so for no credit. So that class, right now, that they take in eighth grade, the grade that they complete with, that's the grade that remains on their transcript and starts that GPA. Looking more specifically at math, some preliminary findings I've already alluded to is that typically, students in the advanced math best perform well. You know, the World Language, there were, there were significant impacts to students, 50 to 60% of our students having a decrease in the, in their GPA as a result of the, of the course. But in looking at math, it's slightly different. However, there are quite a few instances where students struggle in advanced courses. And in those cases, alternative class placements, or maybe even retaking the class may be the best option for the student. And so the math department started looking at their students, started looking at what they were, they were delivering. We've also noticed with math, and, or really with many courses, there appears to be an inconsistency between parochial, private, and other public schools when students transfer to Prior Lake Savage. And of course, they're experiencing the same as well, when our students may transfer to those schools. Course requirements and determination of what constitutes a high school level course can be a complex issue, and there isn't a uniformity in what determines a high level course. Some methods of delivery are different between the different, different school options out there, and in some cases, there are gaps in the standards and the curriculum that's being taught to students. And so anecdotally, when students come in, our teachers notice the difference. And so in some cases, that may not be a level playing field for students moving into the district. The potential impact, and these do mirror what was presented to, presented to the board back in February 2010, is that, similarly with the World Language, in math, students may not be ready for the next step of mathematics, and would be better served to have the opportunity to retake the same level of course. Most significantly, the grade point average will impact the rest of their high school career, and that's really, that one bullet point really sat heavily with the, with the math committee and the math department. It will impact students' class rate. It will impact potentially college entrance and potentially student scholarships. And in a nutshell, it may impact them when applying to college if their eighth grade academic performance is not strong or if it's not strong enough. I think the one consistent discussion point that math had, that World Language also had, is that, you know, as parents and students are making decisions about the courses that they take, when they're taking them in eighth grade, they're making those decisions springtime when their students are seventh grade. And looking at that down the road, when they graduate five years, those types of, I guess repercussions, need to fully be shared with parents and talk with parents and students about, you know, taking the course or looking at the courses that they take. Making sure kids take those courses and they're rigorous, and they're rigorous, but also too, that there is an impact that may not be fully realized until further on down the road when kids are older. And so cutting to more the nitty gritty, they looked at and discussed really what's been the last four years of offering this course of Honors Geometry for eighth grade. For our incoming 11th and 12th graders, the class was offered at Prior Lake High School. Students were bused to the school for that. The class offered at the middle schools for our current incoming eighth, ninth, and 10th grade students. And as I already mentioned, Honors Geometry has been offered to eighth grade students for many years. It's only been relatively recently that it's been offered for credit. And so the recommendation that we're bringing forward tonight is to align the Honors Geometry offering with the World Language offering, which is continue to offer the course, but not offer it for high school credit. And this, this recommendation was reviewed and shared with the District Curriculum Advisory Committee on May 23rd. And so, let's, talking a little bit about what exactly, how will that impact our students moving forward, or what this recommendation will have for students, is for our current eighth graders that are incoming, incoming eighth graders, we'll continue to offer the Honors Geometry to eighth grade students, also to, you know, future students, you know, seventh all the way on down. But by eliminating the credit requirement for students, this is what, how it will impact them. Students will take the course, will have the grade show on their transcript, but the credit will not be awarded. If they receive a B in the class, it will show a B. If they receive a C, it'll show a C, or whatever grade, but it will not start their high school cumulative GPA. By, by doing that, students basically will have the option to retake the geometry course in ninth grade if they so choose, or if they feel that they need further additional support in geometry, or they may continue on to the next level of mathematics. It really is a, a way to offer the class, get students into the class, but also have them take it, and have counselors work with students to say, where's the best fit for you in mathematics moving forward, so that you are post-secondary ready and ready for the next step beyond high school. For the recommendation that will impact our current ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade students, counselors will review course grades from Honors Geometry courses taken in eighth grade year and review the impact on the grade point average. They will go through all of the students, and there are approximately 100. They will look at what their grade was and what their impact on the GPA is, whether that's a plus or a minus. They will meet with each of those students and provide the choice to include the Honors Geometry in the grade point average on the transcript or not. And this, but this, the timeline for this would be, you know, pending approval of this recommendation, counselors will work with students next year to go through those grades and go through, you know, the impact of what it, the impact of what that GPA net course is on that student's cumulative high school GPA, and make the necessary changes. Questions, discussion?
Any questions for discussion, Rich?
You said the counselors will review with the students. Will the parents have a say?
Absolutely.
Okay, so it'll be a form that the students will undertake home and sign by the parent or something to that effect?
Correct. With the World Language, there was a form that was sent home, you know, that detailed the impact, so that parents were making, were part of this decision-making process as well.
Yes, Tom?
So the idea of having the students and parents decide whether they want credit or not, is this the same way we went about with the same thing with the World Language?
Exactly.
Well, I've gotta say, I agree with the direction. You know, it's, it's tough for an eighth grade student to make that choice and maybe get themselves in over their head. I like giving him the opportunity to challenge themselves in a very safe environment in middle school before the harsh realities of high school. school before the harsh realities of high school. So... Any other questions? Yes, Mike?
Yeah, you know, I mean, I support it. The only reservation I have is, you know, you did have one bullet point on there about grade point average affecting college entrance, and all the stuff that I hear recently is kind of counter to that, that, you know, they actually don't worry about grade point average as much as what are the courses that you're taking and are you challenging yourself? And so, I just hope that we're not kind of wrapping that as part of this, that, you know, don't challenge yourself, because I think we really should be. And I appreciate, you know, an eighth grader, but, you know, I think we have to have the message throughout all of their high school career that, I hope that we are challenging all of our students to say, don't take one class because you are sure you're going to get an A versus challenging yourself and you might get a B, because I think that's not, at least from what I'm hearing, the right direction that our kids should be having if they want to go on to a, you know, a four-year college after they leave Prior Lake. So, that kind of jumped out at me as a little bit of a yellow flag in the report.
I would agree with everything you said. You know, colleges are looking at really the sequence of courses that students take. You know, that seems to be the trend that many are moving towards. Is that all colleges? No. But certainly, I would admit, some do look at GPA, some take the, some look at, have their different criteria for looking at the GPA, if there's any weighted grades in there. They take the weighting off and look just at the straight grades. Some look at more ACT, SAT. Some just have very unique processes. I know in talking with Beth directly, I know last year, sometimes the college scholarships or the organizations that offer college scholarships rely heavily on GPAs. You know, and whether that's true, or, you know, but I think in her experience, that seemed to be where the GPA component was coming. But certainly, our message is, is that we want kids to take the appropriate classes to challenge them. And, you know, I think this is a way that we can get students to be in these classes, especially in eighth grade, you know, that they can take the class, expose themselves to a challenging course, and make recommendations or work with counselors about, you know, where is their fit? Do they need to retake the course? Do they need to go to that next level? And use it as an experience to learn without having a real potential negative impact on their...
And, you know, I think this just opens up the possible discussion that maybe we should look at, whether it's, you know, through curriculum committee or whatever, on just, what's the right motivation or incentive to make sure that we are challenging all the kids? You know, in my day, with class rank and all that, it actually, you know, if I was ranked here one time and I knew somebody was a little bit ahead of me, maybe that motivated me to work a little bit harder, you know? So, and I think there's pros and cons on that, but I do think that just all the things that we're seeing out there, that maybe it is a time for us to kind of revisit some of that and say, are the things that we have in place properly motivating and incenting and rewarding or challenging the kids the way that they should be?
Since you bring that topic up, you know, I'm not comfortable with all the emphasis on GPA, because I do agree, most of the colleges, in my experience with our three kids going through, they looked at what they took, and if they got a C in a high-level class versus the A in, you know, something very easy, that made a difference. And, you know, we do emphasize GPA, and I'm going to bring up the fact that sometimes our valedictorians, and they're very intelligent people, salutatorians, sometimes they're forced to take classes so they can keep that position, just to keep that GPA up, at the expense of taking a class they might otherwise like to take and maybe not get as many GPA points. So, I would like us to do more exploration of whether we really want to continue that program, and I understand it's at least a four-year process, because there are kids that are working toward that. I would rather go to something that the colleges do to explore more with the magna cum laude and summa cum laude, where all kids are focused on challenging rather than just the GPA. So, thanks for opening that door, Mike.
Yes.
Could I add that in my conversations this past week with Dave Lund, our high school principal, he is thinking the same thing. He would like to bring an opportunity for a study group to look at how we recognize our scholars, our young scholars, and look at salutatorium and valedictorian and what is happening across our state and across the country. So, that's going to be coming through the curriculum advisory committee and through Mr. Holmberg, and then coming to the board. So, we're all on the same page.
Good, I've been asking for this for at least four years.
It's your day, Lee.
I guess, thank you.
A lot of you said there's about a hundred of these students.
Approximately.
Approximately. Are most of these students that took this in eighth grade continuing to take very challenging courses? Are these most of the students that are very, more or less driven, or?
You know, I don't have the actual numbers with me, but most students who begin down this track do stay with those challenging math courses. You know, we do have, I mean, when students are inclined to math, and this is, seems to be a pattern that continues to happen, is that typically, they're taking math all four years. I mean, they're looking to get the math under their belts so that they have a good foundation going into perhaps a four-year college and things like that. But I don't have the actual numbers as far as if those students have stayed with that track. I'd be willing to venture to guess that many do, but there may be some exceptions.
I have a question.
Yes?
Kind of along that same lines. You know, and I know in world language, sometimes it's been an issue too, is if they start that early, you know, they get to Spanish five, and there's not enough people taking it, or we can't offer it. Has there been a similar with this, with doing the math, or do we have more offerings?
Math is slightly different than world language. I mean, in Prior Lake Savage, world language starts in sixth grade. I mean, math historically has always been a strong subject, and there have been offerings all the way through high school to prepare kids for math. I mean, our high school requirements are three credits, you know, of math before graduation. And typically, you know, it's a department that does have other offerings for students who need additional support, or would like additional challenge, or just would want another math credit before they go off to college or go off to post-secondary choices.
Any other questions? My question, I guess, would be, this is slated as an approval, yet we've also got the policy which ties very, very closely to the recommendation that you've presented. Does it make sense to approve this recommendation outside of the policy, or should we just approve the recommendation within the policy?
Well, the policy is a first read this evening, and so, the changes in there are reflective of the world language and the honors geometry changes. And that was something we talked about as a policy committee. You know, if you'd like, you can make, you can, I can ask for board approval tonight, or if you'd like to wait until the July meetings, that's fine too. But, you know, this recommendation being brought forward is really to bring both of these, both the world language and math into alignment with one another, and as a result, it does change some of the things in policy six twenty.
In the past, we've made decisions and then had to go back and rewrite policy. So, I guess I see it the same way, only this time we have a policy ready.
Right.
Anticipating that you'll approve it.
All right, as long as, that's all I wanted to make sure, is we were being consistent. Any other questions? All right, do I have a motion to approve the recommendation as presented? Removed by Tom, second. By Todd. Any other questions before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Next is 2012-13 school calendar.
Yes, I'm going to bring that forward tonight. As you know, each year, we try to work a year out so that we have a calendar in place for our families as they plan their vacations and their life outside of the school year. This calendar has been brought through the meet and confer committee, has been through the administrative team, and is here tonight for you to review, ask questions about, and approve. This calendar is really modeled after the calendar that we have in place in the coming year, in 11-12. So, it has been rolled forward and meets the requirements of the school year and the number of days per quarter. You can see that on the second page of the report, I think it's page sixty-five.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the calendar as presented? By Tom, second. Second by Lee. Any questions or discussion? Or you're not going to make me start, are you?
When's Easter in 2013? What's the day? Because I know spring break's around the first week of April.
It's probably during the spring break, it's probably that weekend there, with that Friday before.
It was really late this year, which was really unusual.
I think it's around the eighth.
We have to know on the first full moon of the...
I think it's that day after spring break, the seventh.
I think it is too. I think it's the seventh of April.
Right, so we come back on the eighth.
You know, I guess, I voted for the 2011-2012 with the half-days, because I knew we were moving to the sixth period day, and I felt it was important that our teachers had more frequent contact through that transition. I don't believe we need that for the 12-13. I think these half-days are cheating our students of a half a day of education. I don't think we get as much done. In fact, what I hear from my kids is we don't get as much done in those days that we should. I'm looking just at October, we have six of twenty-three school days are affected with time off, conferences, half-days. It just, while I believe that there's a benefit to our teachers of going through and doing this development, I think we're doing so at the expense of our kids' education. They need to be in their seats, they need to be engaged in their classrooms. We're here to educate them. And I don't believe, I think as I'm seeing, you know, kids in our neighborhood get, you know, grow, that free time is necessarily a benefit for these young students. I think they need the structure, I think they need to remain engaged in their school. We as a board need to determine, if this is really important to us, that these teachers get educated, then we need to figure out a way to cover that out of staff development, to allocate more money towards staff development, rather than taking it from the kids on these half-days. Because quite honestly, we count these half-days as a full school day, as a full student contact day, and the kids are getting cheated out of a half-day education. I think it's wrong.
I could offer a counterpoint.
Please do.
And I will. The staff development, the two-hour early release does provide an opportunity for our staff to have rich training and dialogue time, as well as review of data to help inform their instruction. So, the time is not taken lightly, it's really used effectively for our staff during that time. And the reason why we don't go to a full day, another full day of staff development is actually the cost of it, and the cost to our taxpayers. So, we're trying to weigh, preparing our teachers to be the very best they can be in their classroom, continually implementing new curriculum areas, curriculum adoptions, and giving them time to take a breath and make sure that they're on track, so that they are doing the very best job they can in a classroom on every single day. So, I do believe that the two-hour early release days that we have sprinkled throughout this school year are a benefit to our teachers and ultimately a benefit to our students because of the change in practice. Mr. Holmberg designs those two-hour early releases, as well as all the staff development days with the team. Would you like to speak to that?
I would agree with your point, Dr. Grover. You know, and I know that the time is very much needed and requested by our teaching staff. We do have quite a few curriculum initiatives that do require common and consistent time for teachers to come together, work collaboratively as grade levels and teams, and for principals to work with their buildings on data, on initiatives that are relevant to our vision cards that we have as departments and as buildings. At the last district curriculum advisory committee, one of the last things I provided to the group was the overview plan for the two-hour early release and staff development times, including fall workshop for 2011 and 2012. And really, we plan out our year, and we started to plan the year in advance so that we have dedicated time, so that there is collaboration time, there's training, there's looking at data, there is the opportunities to take a step back and look at, are we truly achieving the results that we intend to achieve? And the way to do that is to take that step, or to take that two hours periodically, to look at as a group, what is the data telling us, and do we need to make adjustments along the way? And the value of this is true, you know, your point, Mr. Chairman, about having more professional development for more, you know, staff development. The thing that, the consistent thing that comes across is time. Time that people can be together to have a conversation, a professional dialogue about what students are learning, and two hours is not an astronomical amount of time periodically, but it is time nonetheless to really have strategic and targeted discussions on student achievement. I would be certainly willing to share with you or with the board at a work session what we have planned for 2011-12, to give you a better idea about what are the types of things that we are organizing, and what building principals and administrators, as well as our professional development team have put together and lined up, so that you know what's going on, our staff knows, and are planning diligently already, what next year will look like. And pending approval of this, and, you know, the future of early release and staff development time, a similar plan would be in place for professional development on those times as well.
Again, I'll say, I don't doubt, as I've seen in other presentations that our teachers are using, that time judiciously. What I'm saying is, is I believe the way we've got it set up is taking time from our kids that they need, and we need to be, we need to be, if it's important to us, then we as a board need to invest in it, and we need to make that a priority, rather than taking it from the students. And then I look at October, and I think, my gosh, you know, that's an area that's overloaded with time off, it's breaking the rhythm of the school year. I just, A, I guess, I disagree with the philosophy of the half-days from the very beginning, because we count those as student contact days, and they're not full contact days. And I can, and from the students I've talked to, from the teachers I've talked to, they're not as effective school days as a normal day. The kids know from the beginning, they're getting out as soon as lunch is over. I think, I think we need, we've done a lot of work around making sure we are efficient and effective as a district as we can towards student achievement, and I think this is contra to that goal. Yes, Rich?
Thinking on the advisory committee, I appreciate the schedule of training that Jeff brought forward, and show exactly what the teachers are doing in each of their half-days off. And I guess this question is for Sue Ann. My initial thought on half-days is, if you're busing kids, why are you using the busing, turning the lights on, running the water, doing everything, if they're only going to be there a portion of the day? I would be more receptive to having the full-day training, you know, combined to half-days, have a full-day training, you're not running the buses, those types. So, I guess I would, you mentioned something about cost efficiency, so maybe if you could explain that for me?
Well, there are different ways to look at how we do this. Certainly, we can, absolutely, we can look at the difference in cost between having a full day of training for staff versus having intermittent, smaller trainings for them. The reason why this is cost-effective is that, yes, we do receive funding for the whole school year based on the number of days we have, regardless of if they're full days or half-days, they're the number of days. But in doing this, we're able to capture some time for our staff to really have effective training for them. But yes, we do bring the students in, they do have shortened classes throughout the day. Usually, they have all of their classes, but they're for a shorter period of time. Uh, if used effectively, um, the students shouldn't have a huge loss in learning, uh, rather they should have a different look of their day. And we've pu- placed these, um, early release days at times throughout the calendar that makes sense, uh, for our, our staff to have that kind of opportunity um, so that they can reflect and have that training so they're better prepared for the, for the classrooms. But, um, the, the cost savings, um, is that we're not taking the students out of the classroom for the full day, which is costly. I don't have that number in front of me of what the cost of one day is, but it's significant. We can get it, we can do a study analysis for you. We have, as part of the meet and confer process, we, um, well, be, we'll be meeting monthly in this coming year, we will be, uh, we have invited, um, the personnel committee to be a part of that, uh, conversation and dialogue about the, the, and we talk about this at, at, at every single occasion. Lee is part of that committee and has talked about it with our staff. Um, so tho- those meetings are going to be happening in the fall as we begin to look at the next year, as well as looking at this year.
And I, you know, I just want to say I appreciate the work that the committee's done, and I haven't been a part of that, and, and I don't mean to be disrespectful in any way. This has been a, this has been a, an issue that, that I've been concerned with for a long period of time.
Yes. You know, and I think Eric, in past years, I've acknowledged, uh, uh, support of that as well, and, and it seems like, um, we talk about it here at the board table and then it doesn't go anywhere. So I, and I don't know if that's because there's an underlying belief that there's only a couple of board members that, that feel one way or, or what, but I, you know, maybe it is time for us to actually, you know, it's tough when we're sitting here and being asked to approve a calendar to say, well, let's, you know, set that to the side and, and let's deal with this. So I, I appreciate that. So maybe we just have to be more po- proactive and say, let's really sit down and look at what's the right thing. Cause I agree, I mean, I, and I think, you know, perhaps less so the elementary age kids, but I think certainly as you get into the middle school and high school where you're now getting into, you know, what will be next year's six periods, um, but, you know, those are condensed and I, and I, you know, did, did see it for the first time myself with my daughter this year being a sixth grader, that, you know, that the, the, the feeling that, you know, that the half, you know, early release was probably not quite the same experience as a, as a regular day. So I think I'm seeing it even more firsthand. And I would propose that, um, you know, that we do, um, loo- look at that as a study, um, going forward. You know, I, I think that we're at least fewer half days this year than we've had in the past, so I, I took that as a positive sign, quite honestly, so.
I agree with Eric, and I think, uh, Rich brought up a great point about, uh, the busing back and forth, uh, probably at being an expense, but the board just approved, the prior board approved the six period day to extend the time, the contact time that the students have with their teachers. And yet now we go the opposite way, we credit them with a day and yet we give them less time. Yes, the, the time that the teachers get is, is a great thing, uh, and I agree, I think we need to look at it to try and figure out, might there be a better way? I agree fully with Eric.
I was just gonna say, it's history. What I remember is that we started out with an early release and a late start a number of years ago, and somehow it just kind of went into the decision to go with early release, and then that just became a matter of practice. I'm not sure that we actually approved early release as the thing to do versus full day. We did?
We did.
We actually approved that? We did.
I have the results of a parent survey, uh, that we did in two thousand and eight, in the spring, in the spring of, it was just before, um, I arrived, so it was in the spring of two thousand and eight, Christie, I believe, yeah, right before I started. So I had that as a resource, and you certainly can do that again and ask parents what it is they would like to see us also.
Well, I mean, I would agree with Eric in that I think it's a disservice to our students. I think it's a great thing for our teachers. I mean, they get that time and they need to have that time, but, I mean, even back when my kids were here, I mean, it was half day, oh heck, there's nothing. Nothing going on, I don't have to worry about anything, there's no concentration. For the teacher, it's great. I, I actually don't remember actually approving the, the early or the late, I know we went back and forth between late and early, and we decided on the early release, but I don't remember us just completely getting, going that way.
I think the-
So I think it needs to be relooked at, um, because there are concerns about it. I, I, you're not completely alone on this. And when we do, when meet and confer, to be completely honest, when we could go through the calendar, most of that conversation is coming from the teachers and, and not from administration. It's, it's pretty much a teacher-run contract. Um, and they're going off of direction that they, you know, that we've given them or that they've assumed is what they're supposed to do. So you're not offending me if you vote against the contract, or against the calendar, I mean.
I know you put a lot of work into it, and it, and it takes a long time to put this together.
Can I bring up something, um, just since I looked it up?
Sure.
Easter is March thirty-first, so it would be the first weekend of that spring break, just point of love either.
Um, I just have a couple of comments. Um, I think from a public standpoint, um, you know, the half period or the, the half day, uh, is misunderstood by the parents. I mean, I hear, I hear comments a lot about, you know, they're barely in school in October, you know, what are these really for? And so, you know, I do think it's something that we need to look at. I think, um, if they continue, there probably needs to be like an education process with the parents of what really are we doing? And I know we've tried to do that here, but, um, you know, maybe from a school-to-school level, we're talking either to the PTCs or just, you know, what the value that they do have. Yeah, so I think it's, I do think it's something we need to look at. I do remember being surveyed as a parent, as what was less invasive. So I, I know that, that survey went out, but, um, yeah, I, you know, I would be for taking a look at this again.
Well, and as far as, you know, the value of it, we've, I've asked, um, teachers to come to our meetings and present what they do, so there is, there is value, we hear it. But I, I do question the value for the students on it.
No, the, the number of, we have a set number of student contact days, so if we don't go half days, they're all full days. I mean, that's a given. So if we go with workshop days, that's an additional days added to their work schedules, is that correct? If, if we decide to have more, um, if we have same, a number of workshop hours, would that mean-
Yeah, unless something else in the calendar gives at some point, you know, you, could I, in theory, I suppose not have the teachers come back as early, but we already only have really a three-day lead time, leading up to the school year where we're asking, the employees that are going to be in the classrooms with our students to prepare them, themselves and their classrooms uh, for coming back for the next year. A- and again, that's only three days. So yes, if you, if you wanted to go to a model where you're looking at, at creating, say, an additional four full days so that you could have one staff development day per quarter, um, then you would be looking at creating four additional work days for teachers that would not currently be budgeted for or in the calendar.
But we already have some of those days when we look at Martin Luther King Day, President's Day.
Correct.
Some of those are already built into the calendar as well.
Yep. So i- if you took the six halves, it would be three fulls, you know, I mean, I'm, this is all, just throwing it out there in theory, like I said, this isn't a, a master plan.
Oh, I just had another question. Um, the two half days at the end of the year, I think I know the answer, but we have those because they have to be half days, less tests on one day, or?
Um, I, we did that, uh, two years ago, I believe, Lee, uh, because that allows the secondary to ha- offer half of their finals exams or courses or, uh, end of u- course projects due on one day and then the others on the other day, feeling that that was working well at the high school, the middle school wanted to try it. So that was why you see those half days there.
Yes, Rich?
Is the calendar historically been approved almost a year in advance?
Yes. And then-
I mean, cause the NFL schedule doesn't come out.
Recently.
Recently, but then, of course, there's always some change, and then we have to bring it back again. So this would be a preliminary, uh, calendar uh, if it was approved by the board. And I'm all for having a survey of the parents, of having a rich dialogue with our teachers, our teacher leaders and our staff development people and what happens. Are there other options out there? Certainly we could look at those and, and try to figure out if there's another way and what that cost would be.
And then following up on Stacy's comment, I think, I think the need for education of the parents is essential here, and I think we can use the schedule that Jeff has come up with, with his teachers, I mean, what training is going to be done during those times. And let the public know that.
Right.
Do, yes, Tom? How soon do we need to approve this? And if we want to get some more feedback on other options, do we have enough time to study other options before we approve this?
My only, my only thought on that is if we really want to get teacher feedback, then we're really looking at postponing this until the fall when we can start to really have those conversations with teachers. Um, you know, so if you want to have that part of, of the dialogue, then it really does need to wait until the fall. Um, so that, that does stretch it out.
And that includes the October ca- the, the October schedule as well? Meet and confer won't meet throughout the, sorry?
The first meeting, I believe, is October or September? I don't remember now.
It's the end of September is the first meeting of meet and confer.
And at that meeting, um, Todd, Lee, and Eric are all invited to be a part of that meet and confer process as we expand the meet and confer roles, uh, to really have a dialogue between board, administrators, and staff members. So it would be a great opportunity to bring that back.
And there was a, a request by parents, Rich, to have the calendar out further for their planning. So it was, it started out somewhat in accommodating them so that they would know when their breaks were, so they could take their kids out when there was in school, rather than during school. Um, so it's a little bit of a courtesy to parents and, and I'm sure staff, um, that we do this. So we don't, you know, to answer your question, we don't have a timeline, it's just that people get anxious to know what's coming.
And they start calling the office in September for the following year because they're booking their, um,
trips.
Their trips. So there's that.
But the basis of the calendar would remain the same with the spring break, with the quarters. The MMEA weekend is the same, Christmas won't move. The only real change could be is the half days to a full day, and that's not something people plan a vacation for.
So we could, we could have the calendar approved in, in concept, um, and then have a discussion again at the meet and confer meeting in the fall. Um, and then some research and parent surveys. So I wouldn't expect it would come back to the school board until the first of the year by the time we sent out the survey, had it back, had more dialogue with staff, uh, had Julie involved in what the cost would be, uh, Jeff certainly involved in what staff development needs are, and then bring back a proposal.
Where do we stand on, on Minnesota minimum number of contact days for students?
Um, they haven't changed the minimum contact days.
So we're at the minimum?
No, uh, we're just, we, they approved it to be where you are. Wherever you are, that's the minimum, that's the ma- that's, you, you're, you're funded on, on that, those provi- provisions. It's, it's, I know it doesn't make any sense because district, different districts are different numbers, but that is what the legislature did.
I'd be hesitant to release any part of this con- this some calendar at this time. Just being a parent that's busy and they see this, they're gonna think that's it, and then maybe not look again until it's too late. Um, so I guess I would prefer that we, if we're gonna redo things, and I understand certain things don't change, but some of the days in there may, and I would rather that we present it the way we expect it to go in the future, my suggestion.
Is that, is that a motion to table?
Sure.
Second.
Um, I'm not sure, I don't believe a motion to table takes a, a vote. It does? Okay. Um, we have a motion to table. Who made the original motion, Martha?
Tom.
Okay. Okay. Um, so we have a motion and a second to table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Our motion carries seven zero, and we'll bring it back in the fall.
We'll bring it to meet and confer in the fall.
Thank you. Um, district office and board activities calendar. Dr. Grover?
Yes, on an annual basis, we create a calendar of, uh, uh, by, by month of what, uh, the, the different procedural and, uh, official duties are of each of the different directors, as well as what the board needs to do as far as negotiations and, uh, their role as the policy holders of the district. So we do that, we also do it for district administration and, and our district office. So you can see the two thousand and eleven, twelve, um, uh, monthly calendar of activities is being presented for you tonight.
Do I have a motion to approve the district calendar and monthly activities as presented? By Stacy, second?
I'll second it.
By Rich. Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries seven zero. Uh, joint meeting plan discussion with Prior Lake Savage and the foundation.
Yes, and, uh, usually during the summer months, um, or into the early fall, we have had joint meetings with the, the city council of the city of Prior Lake, as well as the city of Savage, and we've also met with our, um, our Prior Lake Savage area, um, foundation, uh, board, and had great dialogue with them, and we need to set those, uh, if that's an important priority for us as a board or for you as a board, we need to get going on setting those dates.
Okay.
Sometimes we've done it on an off night of a school board meeting because the Prior Lake, uh, city council meets on the same night that we do. So that makes it a little bit more difficult unless we're willing to meet prior to a meeting.
Okay. And we've typically held these in August? Is that still?
We've tried.
We've tried.
I think Martha has contacted the city administrators of both cities and got their availability, and then we started from there, I believe.
Yeah. I think we're all, I, I, it sounds like the consensus of the board was supporting continuing these, uh, these meetings. So we just ask administration to maybe try to pull together some days at work.
Okay. In August if we can, uh, and September. I would, I can't imagine that we could have all three within one month. It would be every Monday night, uh, for you. So, um, we'll try to get them arranged so that we have a, a nice array of meetings coming up.
Okay. Uh, in and out migration report, Julie.
In your board packet and also on the screen. Um, we have a history of our open enrollment, um, in and out to the district, and you can see that over the years, um, as the district has grown, this number has also grown. In two thousand and seven and eight, we were pretty even with the number of students coming into the district, open enrolling into the district, and those also open enrolling out of the district. In two thousand and eight, nine, you can see that we had more students going out of the district, and the main reason for that was the opening of a charter school here in our district. But interesting enough, um, that same year, we did have a big jump also in the number of students open enrolling into our district. So even though they are a little off balance, we did have a big increase also that year of students open enrolling, and that number continued to increase each of the years. And I wanted you to see this history, um, to see that, um, that we are still making strides in those students coming into the district. Um, but we have also closed open enrollment at the high school level, so that has had, had an effect also on our, um, open enrollment into the district. But it's a good historical, um, graph to show that what it has been happening in, um, in our district for those open enrolled. We are taking a really good look at that, um, where our students are going, um, for the future, um, to take a good look at how we can attract those students back into our district by some of the programs that we're offering also.
Yes, Stacy.
Are we still wanting, getting people wanting to come into the high school, we know, or?
Yes. Uh, and we've had that conversation also, um, about should we have, should we keep the high school closed? We know we're, we're nearing capacity, but we also know that we have space and we have empty classrooms. So, uh, should we, you know, continue to keep the high school closed even though we're going through that bubble of, of, uh, large numbers? Or, or should we, um, open it up and, and see how many more students? Annually for the last two years, we've taken about twenty students, uh, and when we opened the enrollment for about three weeks in January, February. Um, but we do continue to have families that, uh, would choose to come he- to our district and bring younger siblings, but choose not to if our high school is closed, because they want their children to stay together. Dave London and I have had this conversation. Dave London and I have had this conversation just in the last week again.
Do we have any idea what number we're losing out on or?
Probably about twenty more. Um, that's, would be about the, the guests.
I had that same conversation with Dave London. Yeah. Um, I have a question.
Yeah.
It's okay. Um, on the out of district, does that include our private schools? Are those, are they're not considered out of district in this?
They're not. This is only those students attending another public school. So it does not include our parochial students or homeschool students.
Okay.
Does that include Holy Angels as a high school?
Correct. That's a parochial school.
So it would not be included?
Would not include.
I think it's interesting that we saw the, the increase in out migration and the increase in in migration around the time we opened up Redtail Ridge. Um, I don't know what's, what to think about that, but.
And I also look at, if I may, at the number of, um, uh, students that are open enrolling continues to grow in our district, um, on an annual basis. Of other, uh, families that live outside our district choosing to be part of our district. And that is a positive thing, um, for us as a district, certainly.
Julie, you mentioned the increase due to the charter school. How many of our students are currently enrolled in the charter school? For the ten, eleven estimate?
We have about, it's mainly at the primary's level. So kindergarten through fifth grade is where we see, and then it drops off, so you can come in sixth, anything sixth grade and over. So we have about, um, forty, up to forty students per grade level that, um, choose to attend a charter school.
So probably about a third of the difference. I know a few years ago, we did a study of parents on why they were choosing other districts. I can't recall when we did that study. Do you?
I remember it.
It's been about five years. So it might be worth considering again. I'd like to know why, you know, if, if only, if only a third of the, you know, of the difference, uh, is really coming from those charter school kids. I'd like to know where, where the rest of our students are out migrating.
I did take a good look at that and to see where they were going. And the majority of them obviously are going to neighboring schools, but the majority of them are, Burnsville has the biggest percentage of those going out to non-charter schools. And then of course Shakopee has a much smaller, and then there's interspersed between our neighboring districts, Jordan, Valplane, New Craig, um, some to Lakeville, Bloomington.
Okay.
So a lot of it has to do with where their parents live and where they work and, and also childcare.
Okay. Any, yes, please.
We do have that breakdown for you if you would like to see what that looks like as far as how many students actually go to each of the different public schools.
Okay. I, I would.
Yeah, that'd be nice information to know.
Bring that at a future work study or, or email. I can email it to you.
Okay. Any other questions for Julie? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, next is, uh, policy, first reading of, uh, six twenty and six ten field trips.
We're going to look at six ten twenty first, which is credit for learning. And Mr. Holmberg is going to talk about this, uh, policy in, in light of his proposal earlier this evening.
Uh, policy six twenty is being brought forward to you this evening as a first read. Um, it is, the purpose, as you can see, is to recognize student achievement, which occurs in post-secondary enrollment options and other advanced programs. Uh, the presentation I, I gave to you this, this evening is part of policy six twenty, but certainly this policy encompasses a, a wider swath of post-secondary or advanced, uh, receiving credit, um, for, for those types of offerings that students are taking. The revisions for this are somewhat minor. Um, one is on, under, uh, Roman numeral five miscellaneous courses. You'll see a, the change there to, to, uh, represent, uh, what I presented to you this evening of students, uh, receiving acknowledgement of the course completion, uh, for, for classes taken at the middle school, which are high school level classes and not counted towards their high school, uh, grade point average. And finally, the other, uh, area, which is Roman numeral seven, was taken, uh, was struck from the, uh, policy as those students affected. Uh, if memory serves me correctly, we were reading through this. Uh, it didn't, it seemed contradictory to what, uh, we had stated in the policy. Uh, and it really didn't seem to make, didn't have a strong correlation back to items within the policy. And so we took it out. Uh, we, it didn't make sense. It didn't fit, uh, and somewhat contradictory, as I mentioned. So, um, aside from that, the policy, uh, essentially, those are the minor revisions for that this evening.
Okay. Any questions on policy six twenty?
The only one I have, uh, the second, I think it's, uh, B after, in the miscellaneous. I'm, I apologize. All of a sudden my computer's kind of acting up on me here. Um, but so if I'm understanding right, Jeff, the difference there is that if a middle school student physically goes to the high school to take a class, then it will count on their transcript versus if it's a high school level class offered in the middle school, it won't be, but.
Yeah, B seems to contradict.
Actually, B should be, should be changed.
Okay.
Uh, that's correct, uh, because I, um, in speaking with the.
Our intent is that a middle school student taking any high school class, it will be for the purpose of the class, but not to get a.
Correct. The reason why B was not changed is in my presentation this evening, uh, there were, the twelfth and eleventh graders received the class at the high school. And the current ninth, the incoming ninth and tenth graders had the class, uh, delivered at the middle school. And there was some question as to, you know, should we be making it mandatory for those eleventh and twelfth graders to take the credit? And, uh, the committee had looked at that and said, no, this is something that's good for all students. And so that was my omission not to get back to the policy to, to properly reflect that. That will be in it for the second read.
Why we have two reads?
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, policy six ten.
Uh, we have policy seven oh one point two.
Did we cover six ten already?
Uh, no, six, six ten is a first reading though.
Right.
Yes, and I can do whichever one you'd like. Well, we can do six ten first and then we'll go back to, um, seven oh one point two.
Just following my agenda and that's how it's listed.
Okay. Um, on the field trip, uh, the major magnitude field trip, which is six ten, uh, we were asked to review it for a couple of different reasons. One, um, uh, on the chaperone issue. Um, there was a question about whether a retired teacher would be considered a, an official chaperone uh, on a maj, major magnitude field trip. And the policy committee had a long conversation about this topic and decided that, no, it, the way it reads now is the correct way, that, that we really wanted to have staff members currently into, in our employ be the official, um, chaperones for our major magnitude field trips. We want them to have current relationships with those, uh, staff members and we want that accountability to be there. Uh, certainly retired teachers can, um, sign on to be, uh, a support chaperone, if you will, but not as the official school district chaperone was, was where we landed on that one. We had a long conversation about whether that would be appropriate or not. So that wording stayed the same. The wording that changed has to do with the reporting back to the school board. If you go to the very end of, uh, under, uh, after the trip, um, you will see that, um, the first one, an informal report should be made to the superintendent and the principal uh, upon return to Prior Lake, and that does happen. Um, and then the second one, a formal report should be made to the school board. We decided that that is not as necessary as it might have been in the past, as long as we know that things went well, that to have all of our major magnitude field trips come back and report to you, uh, might be, uh, um, a time constraint. Uh, from your part, our board meetings would be really long. Um, and that really a written summary of the trip, um, made to the advisor, I think, and certainly it could be put in our consent agenda, would be a very appropriate thing for you. So you have feedback. We'd like for you to have the feedback on how the trip went, um, the success of it, et cetera. And you've seen that oftentimes, um, I think when our, our band, uh, our middle school band directors take the middle school students to, um, uh, Chicago or wherever they go, they bring, they send back the photos and we have those, and sometimes they make presentations. Oftentimes there's confusion, should I make one or not? And if we're very busy, I might put that off so that it's not happening in a timely fashion. So this seemed like a, a nice alternative for us so that our staff members don't feel like they have to come back. Uh, we don't feel like we have to put them on the agenda, uh, but they have a way to give that written summary.
So with this, just kind of thinking out loud, because for some of these trips, um, that, you know, particularly the ones to, to foreign lands, uh, I personally get a lot out of it. I, I enjoy seeing what our students were engaged in while they were on the trip. I enjoy seeing how they interacted with, with, uh, the culture. Um, I've, I think that also kind of highlights the benefit of what we're trying to do in, in, in developing global thinkers and, and global learners. Uh, I, I, I don't want the policy to, to necessarily keep us from doing that. I understand when we look at, and, and not to, not to disparage, uh, you know, any group, but when we do a major magnitude field trip to Hudson for, uh, Nordic skiing or, uh, say the annual baseball, uh, trip, I don't think we need a formal presentation on those. But I think in, in many, in, in some cases, they are wholly appropriate. And I'd like to be able to keep those in, in some fashion.
Are you saying if they're international trips?
Uh, I'm not saying that they all have to, but I'm, I'm, I'd like to leave the option open that it can be. It doesn't necessarily have to be a written summary. Maybe that's a good, a good premise and, and, but figuring out some way to recognize that trip and bring that.
Could the decision and/or recommendation be made at the time that the request to go on the trip is being brought forward to the board? I mean, would that be an appropriate consideration to say, you know, Sue Ann, you and/or the, uh, you know, building principal would propose, and this one we think would make sense to have a post, post-trip recap for the board?
Happy to do that. And the other thing is, um, for example, the trip to Belize, you know, we were sent a fairly large document of everything that they did, which was really quite interesting to me. I, I was glad to hear about it. I don't know that we needed to have that whole thing presented at board meeting. But it was interesting to get the feedback on it. So we were kind of balancing that out with some of these other trips. And some of them we don't necessarily need to hear about, but it is interesting to hear about a number of them.
But I'll take, I'll take Belize as an example. It's a great example where we see it, but the public doesn't and, and, um, as a great opportunity that, that they might be looking forward for their students at some point in time and how we've truly integrated, uh, environmental education into not just the classroom, but offering opportunities, uh, to expand on that.
And I don't disagree. I think there's some that are appropriate to come to the board, but we didn't want, the way it's written right now, it implies that every single field trip needs to come to the board. And, and I don't think we need that. Or as a discussion with our committee, we didn't feel that that was.
I'd like to leave it open. I think Mike's got a, a, a good recommendation to start with.
We'll, we'll take it back to the committee and try to wordsmith a little bit and bring it back to you for a second, please.
We could also make a comment at the time we, if we approved the trip, the board could say, you know, come on back and give us a report. If, if need be, if need to be either or.
Okay. Uh, this was a first reading on both policies. They'll be coming back in July. Uh, if you have any additional questions or comments, uh, contact superintendent or anyone on the policy committee. Uh, second reading for policy seven oh one dash two dot two, fund balance. Were you going to walk through it or?
I was not planning on walking through it again. Um, the reason was, well, first of all, this, uh, fund balance policy is changed due to the GAZB fifty four ruling for fund definitions. Um, we did take it to the policy committee. Um, we brought it to the board for a first reading in the first meeting in June. Um, and we also then brought it to the finance committee and there were no changes from the first reading. And so it is exactly as it was presented, um, at the June meeting, first June meeting.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the final version of, uh, the fund balance policy?
I'll make the motion.
By Lee, second by Stacy. Uh, any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. That motion carries seven zero. Uh, administrative reports. Dr. Grover?
Yes, um, even though school is out, uh, it continues to be very busy here at the district office and throughout the district. Um, last week, um, the, there were countless teachers here, uh, were, and this room was transformed into a storage unit, uh, as textbooks were arriving for our new science and math curriculum. And I know Jeff, if you wanted to speak to that for just a second, um, that would be great.
As, uh, as part, as Dr. Grover mentioned, uh, we had our elementary curriculum groups for, for science, National Geographic, as well as, uh, our, our group working on the math expressions meeting in the, in the professional development center. And, uh, both, both groups had appro, anyone had appro, approximately tw, between twenty and thirty teachers. Uh, here, planning, working together, we had representatives from math expressions as well as National Geographics doing, doing trainings, providing overview. Uh, with the science curriculum adoption comes a significant amount of materials, manipulatives, I mean, those textbooks, as well as, uh, experiment kits and, and things like that. Math was very similar and, uh, a very productive, uh, very productive four days by the, by the teachers that were there planning. Um, they will be, there will be another day in August or a sequence of two days where both groups will come back, uh, refresh their, their memories, so to speak, after the summer hiatus and, uh, spend some time and plan and overview and training for their colleagues during fall workshop in math and, and more so in science and a little bit in math, so.
And when I walked through, thank you, Jeff, when I walked through this room, uh, they were working, teachers are huddled together working on essential lessons for their colleagues to teach in the coming year. So this is a way that we're using those non-student days, um, and our staff development dollars in order to prepare our staff for huge changes in how they're, uh, teaching the curriculum in both science and in math. Both of our previous curriculum had been in the district for almost two decades, um, seventeen, eighteen years, uh, on Foss and on, um, uh, everyday math. I want to call it Chicago math still. Um, so tho, these are big changes as we're moving forward. So giving teachers time, uh, during that first week, uh, after school's finished, to come back and work together with their colleagues was very productive and a good use of our dollars. Uh, that didn't impact hopefully any of our students in any negative ways, so that was a good thing. And a way that we're using the time when teachers are outside of their classroom responsibilities to maximize, uh, their learning as they prepare for new curriculum. So that was an important part of what's been going on. Um, over the past two weeks, I have just completed, um, uh, my last of three rounds of, uh, interviews with all of our district administrators and completed a, a written summary back to them. Um, so I've learned a lot about how we've been doing on our goals as we look at our vision cards and we prepare for the fall. Um, those preliminary datas or pieces are starting to come in, uh, of how our students did compared to last year. We'll wait for our MCA twos, um, certainly for, uh, our third through eleventh graders to see where, what, how they've done compared to last year. We've had tremendous effort this year on our academic performance and we're hopeful to see some really positive changes as we move forward. The predictors are in place that we've got some places of tremendous growth as all, as well as some places where they haven't met the mark as much as, 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 as well as they would have liked to. So plans, uh, administrators are now in the process of planning what that's going to look like for them in fall workshop with their staff as they prepare them to do those, uh, data-driven decisions that they need to be making in the coming year. So all the focus right now of our administrators is, uh, on the fall and getting prepared for our staff to come back. Um, so we're very busy doing that as we move into, um, the end of June and beginning of July and a few vacation days in the middle.
Okay. Do you want to talk about, uh, France?
Yes, I want to, uh, just let you know that, that, uh, major magnitude, uh, field trip to France, um, has been postponed a year. It was going to be in two thousand and twelve. Um, I did talk to, um, the teacher Jill, and she expressed her interest to wait a year so she wouldn't be competing with the other major magnitude field trips, uh, the one going to England as well as the one. to England, as well as the one going to Italy. So she's putting that off for a year, and will be coming back with that plan for the following year, and getting more students. She just didn't have enough to make it work. So that is one, one other thing that happened. And then, my last one is, we are moving forward with bringing adult basic education and the GED, ELL programs back to our district as of July 1st, and having those planning meetings and transition meetings with Carver Scott Educational Cooperative on what that looks like. So those plans will be coming forward to you over the course of the next two months.
Just a quick question on the, on the France trip. Is it, is it postponed, or is it essentially canceled, and we'll have a new major magnitude request coming to the board when she's ready to plan?
At this point, it's postponed, but she would, of course, come back and talk about those plans like she did before. The idea, the concept would be the same, if she can get enough students to go, but she will come back again in the coming year, in 2011, as she prepares for 2013.
So the idea is that we would seek, she would seek approval again?
The cost changed dramatically from year to year, so even just that one component alone would be reason to bring it back.
Okay. Any other administrative reports? No, it's getting too late for everybody. Any board reports? You know, I just have one comment, not necessarily a board report, but I want to thank Stacy, Todd, and Rich. We were at Dan Patch Days, selling tickets on Saturday night, and it was, it was a cool night, but it was a good night, and I'll tell you, it was the fastest two hours, I think, I ever...
You forgot Diane.
And, and we had, yeah, we, thank you, we did it with members of the foundation, so we had Diane and Ken Zeeman, Linda Anderson was there as well, and others. So it was a, it was a good night for Prior Lake Savage School Board, as well as the Education Foundation. Anything else? Any other business that needs to come before the board this evening? Just talking on future events, we have our regularly scheduled board meeting on, on July 11th, and we have a workshop on the 25th, where I believe we're going to have Dennis Cheesebrooks coming again, talk about the balance scorecard.
And set our goals for the board for the coming year.
Yep.
Just one other thing.
Yes.
I was, I wanted you to know, the foundation also helped run the 5K and the 1K fun run in the morning, and my husband Jim and I were there at 7:45, helping get that all organized. And often, it was really great to see so many families out there, ready to take the challenge, and young children ready to do the 5K. So that was a great way to start Saturday morning, so. Dan Patch Days, 2011.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. By Stacy, second. By Tom. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries seven zero, and we're adjourned. Thank you.